I like the one I'm in on the beach. They were in Hawaii last week.
How about for a second, I thought it was the island. I was like, oh, while they were here and then I looked and I was like, well, that's.
Jamie, should we guys go on here in a second?
I was just sharing video. I went to see the Eagles at the Sphere and they were in. Have an opportunity, you should all go.
Who are the Eagles?
Who are the Eagles? You're such a kid. Or kid or.
You're back on the Internet.
Do we have to be on YouTube to move forward?
No.
Okay. So you're back on, I believe.
All right, so.
Jamie, are we good to go?
Okay, yes.
We're just on Zoom.
Right now.
We're on Facebook.
We're on Facebook?
And the meeting is being recorded internally and we'll get that posted as soon as we get that opportunity.
So we gotta go from the.
Do we have to do it from the top or is he good to go with what was?
No, we're good to go. Yeah, let's just pick up from where we were if there's questions being posed.
So I have a question. I was hearing that you're maybe gonna talk about the four-pack like we did before, you know, the two round trips and now we're up to six. But that's impossible for somebody to just like get the four-pack. I know when I talk to the seniors, they rarely go over and with them expiring, they lose their money because they can't get refunded. So is there any flexibility perhaps?
The four-pack was only used by about four or five individuals. It never took off. So we felt that the six-pack would be, you know, meet halfway, you know? If you're not traveling really like three round trips in a year, I mean, it's hard to fit into what would be really a commuter program. Most commuter programs in the transportation industry aren't, we're very lenient when it comes to how many trips you need to do. Most of them, you're having to travel a lot more, you know, weekly or whatnot. So when it comes to our commuter program, three round trips in a year, that's pretty lenient for a commuter program.
I hear what you're saying.
And if the four-pack had been more popular, then, you know, maybe it's something we could consider.
There's no way this, the city could. Mine is, kill me. Anyway, the city could help those folks out if they're only a two-traveler a year that we somehow pay them that little bit of subsidy.
Well, I mean, personally, I'm still asking the same question, I think, that I had before, which is, is there a way to have a two-pack? What is the reasoning for not offering a two-pack? If someone is a commuter, if they're a City of Avalon resident, they have a subsidy card, they have to travel on the express. The funding is there, I believe, for them to be able to have that covered. What is the reasoning for not offering a two-pack as opposed to a six or 10-pack? My concern is that if you're looking at a family of four or five, they're having to pay almost double at one time what they were paying previously. For some families, that may be okay. They may be able to do that and over the span of a year, they would've spent that money anyway. But just the one-time payout is what I'm worried about, especially for larger families, that they may, especially I know after Christmas in January during the toughest time of the year when everybody doesn't have money, it needs to spread, having to drop that. I mean, I know I make a relatively good salary and I still have trouble because I can't make a boat reservation until I have the money to buy a new commuter book each time. And I go through them relatively quickly right now because of my city and business work dealings. So I can't imagine for a family of four or five or more, how much more money that is to put out at one time. I don't know if there's a way to have a, I don't want to make it more complicated for anybody to have to do that, but I'm wondering if there's a way to have offsets for people that cannot afford to do that when they need to.
Recording in progress.
Thank you. So I'm not sure if there's a way to try to figure that out.
If I could, I mean, some of the, some of the roadblocks that we as a city ran into with our commuter program is a definition, working with Metro on the definition of commuter. And prior to me, I know that there was discussion and back and forth about the minimum number that would qualify somebody as a commuter. And if you talk about purchasing a 10-pack, that's five round trips and that was, my understanding was that was their floor of a criteria to qualify as a commuter for the funding. When you get into two, that's a trip over and back. So, you know, I know we're doing our research on the city end to define if somebody is a resident and they meet the time that they're here as a resident, the nine months in the criteria, but then the 10, that was coming from Metro. Now, we haven't revisited that to see if that would change, but I know that that was part of what we were running into is, and I think you alluded to that, Eric, about, you know, a minimum of, that's only five trips in a year. Are you really a commuter? And we've been able to continue that. So I think that's the only thing that would be in jeopardy if we went lower than.
I'd not.
I mean, six, I get, but I think when we talked about four and we did talk to entire express team about going to four and that's really when we were getting into that area, are we gonna be able to sustain that?
Well, and maybe even, I mean, if you look at, and I don't know that this would work any better, so don't run with this, but just throw ideas out. Is it better to go to something like a membership model? Is it better to look at if a person, like, let's say you have a family and those children are gonna be using five round trips in a year, which qualifies them as a commuter, then can they split out how they pay for that? Is there a way to make it so that there's a balance due as opposed to everything paid upfront if it's a hardship or if they can prove a hardship? I think that's the issue I'm coming up with is just that it seems like there are a number of families that would have that be a hardship at a time where this is meant to be a program to help them, which it does, but having it be due all at one time may prove an insurmountable amount of money for them to come up with at one time.
There's no question that that's the time that it impacts, that this would impact them is that initial setup, no question. And we as a city, I mean, this isn't our, this isn't our initiative. You know, it's not part of our program. It's the express and we're certainly willing to work with them on that. I just don't know. I mean, we would do whatever we can to make it work, but we do realize as a city, it's gonna impact the commuter program at least in this next six months because a family goes and buys a 10-pack, now you're gonna have, the burden on the family is also gonna be the additional burden on the program with the funding. So we do fully expect that as this ramps up, it's gonna impact the commuter program. We just don't know to what extent. After that, it should balance out.
Right.
And it doesn't necessarily mean that if I'm a family of five and I still have some tickets, I don't have to buy, I mean, you kind of have to anticipate, but maybe you don't have to buy all five members at that one time, you know, if you have other tickets left, you can still carry those out for the next. How long are you gonna take to carry this program out? What's the timeline? I mean, starting in January.
It starts January 6th, but we wanted to make sure during the mediation process that we were able to allow people that already have books, whether it's one or 10 or five, already on their account, that they could share those until they're used up.
So this could be six months or seven months or eight months.
It could be a year theoretically, if they bought a book on January 5th.
So maybe that, people then realizing that can kind of start saving up a little bit so when they know those are gonna run out. And again, they don't have to sign up everybody all at the same time and pay for everybody at the same time.
Yeah, this doesn't mean on January 6th, everyone has to come down and, you know, split out their books or anything like that. Once again, through the mediation process, our biggest concern was what we're talking about right now is that upfront cost and we explained that over and over and like I said, the other party had zero compassion on that.
And so what was their policy justification for the change?
I'm sorry?
What was their policy justification for these changes?
Unfortunately, I'm not allowed to get into details of what the suit was.
And then are we allowed, are they allowed to do an impact assessment to see how it's gonna affect everybody, especially low-income residents?
I mean, we could, we could try, attempt to do that, sure.
And I'd just like to add, kind of like what Councilmember Lavelle was talking about, we've kind of talked about it briefly in passing and whatnot in meetings, but if the city wants to come up with something where an individual travels once and they want to come up with a program of reimbursing that individual a certain amount to lessen the burden, we're always open for discussion about that.
Other questions or comments?
I'm gonna bet we're probably gonna get a million questions. And so will it be appropriate to forward everything to just the proper channels, which would be YouTube?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's the express's program. I mean, it does, our commuter program with the city does not change at all.
I understand, but we are, you know, here for the community, so we're gonna get the questions. So I make sure if we get the questions, if it's okay to forward these questions to y'all.
Oh, yeah. If any questions come up, please, you know, either go to the ticket window or call Passenger Services at our company and we'll be able to explain it or answer those questions. Please, if you have any questions, don't ask your neighbor or whatnot because you're gonna get misinformation most likely, so please reach out to us or come talk to us. Don't believe everything that gets put out on Facebook, that that is what it is. We wanna, we wanna get the right information out there.
And then, so will the express page just kind of like have everything on their website? Because, you know, everyone's on Facebook and then from there, we can share to everybody what it actually says and what will happen?
Correct. We'll be modifying the commuter page on there. And then, like I said, we'll be sending out emails. We have a app, we're getting a list of all the email addresses for the commuters and we're gonna send out, you know, what's going on in case they're not watching the city council meeting right now or don't see it, as well as the breakdown of pricing and about the six-pack and whatnot. And we'll have it in both the English and Spanish.
Perfect, thank you.
And we have a party for Judy Rios on the mall.
Yeah, if you wanna set that up, we'll be happy to. Yep, Judy, her retirement date is at the end of the year.
Yeah. Who's gonna give those Tony alerts? We'll have to figure out who that is.
Right there, Irma.
I hope we're Irma.
All right. Oh, congratulations.
She's been voluntold.
Irma will be taking on Judy's position.
Excellent. Congratulations. All right. And thank you, Eric.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Next, we have Southern California Edison, Tracy. Hopefully Tracy's on the line.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so I do have a presentation, but I'm not seeing it on the screen.
We aren't either.
I think they had it there. So someone was supposed to be presenting it for me?
Well, yeah, let's look into that. We'll see if we have. Johnson, can you see if there's a Edison?
Where are you going, cowboy? Okay.
Are they working on that?
Yeah, they are.
Okay.
It was up just a moment ago. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Merry Christmas.
Dave, did you say we are up on Facebook, but just not YouTube? Is that right?
I think we're just recording and it's just on Channel 3.
Okay.
Yeah, Tracy's, Tracy's on if we just need her presentation up.
Oh, we can see it?
It's up here, but nobody else can see it. I mean, it's not up in front, it's not up on Council's.
Okay. That's okay.
Okay. There we go. Go ahead, Tracy.
Okay, so, good evening, Council and Mayor Marshall. My name's Tracy Degnan and I'm from Southern California Edison and I'm here tonight to present the SCE's annual gas safety presentation. So, next slide. Most of you know that here on Catalina, SCE not only delivers electricity, but we also provide the water and gas utilities as well. Tonight, I'm gonna go over a few of the gas safety tips and reminders. Okay, next slide. On Catalina, we deliver a propane air mixture that is designed to mimic natural gas. It is delivered on a pipeline system that is installed, tested, operated, and maintained according to strict standards and guidelines used by SCE and required by local, state, and federal agencies. SCE conducts routine patrols, visual ground inspections, and cathodic protection installed to prevent rusting and corrosion. And because of these things, system failures on the gas system are rare. Okay, next slide. The propane gas system consists of two types of pipelines. There's mains and service lines. Mains are the large pipelines that carry the propane from the plant out to the service areas. So in some areas, the main pipeline may be marked by signs that contain general location and contact information. Service lines are the pipelines that run underground from the mains to the meters at your homes and your businesses. Okay, next slide. Because most of our gas pipeline is underground, it's very important that you call Dig Alert prior to, oh, there we go, prior to conducting any digging activities. This includes projects on your own property. If you are planning to start a project, you must call 811 two full working days prior to digging to allow utilities to come out and mark the pipeline route for you. It's very important to know where your pipeline route runs through your property so you could avoid building any structures or planting any trees or shrubs over the route. Excavation must be done with hand tools until the gas line is found. If you accidentally hit a pipeline, please call SCE immediately at our 800 number, which is 800-367-8851, so they can come and inspect the pipeline for any damage. And that 800 number is specific to Catalina Utilities for Edison. Okay, the next slide. So customer responsibilities. This slide shows where SCE responsibilities end and the customer responsibilities begin. All piping from the gas meter to the residence or business is the responsibility of the customer. So it's important that you have your piping inspected periodically for corrosion or leaks and make repairs if any unsafe conditions are discovered. Next slide. Also, test your gas appliances regularly. With cooler temperatures here, now is a good time to check furnaces and other appliances. There's local plumbers who could assist in inspecting and making repairs if. And pipeline routes and meters must be kept clear of any structures or other obstructions. Okay, next slide. So how to recognize a propane gas leak. Propane is a colorless and odorless gas, so a chemical odorant called mercaptan is added to help people identify gas leaks. Some say it smells like rotten eggs or sulfur. Other ways you might be able to detect a gas leak is if you see like a white cloud or a hissing noise, a frozen area on the pipeline, bubbling if it's underwater, and of course, if there's any flames coming from the pipe or the ground, that could indicate that you might have a leak. Propane is different than gas in that it's heavier than air, so it's gonna settle more in the lower levels of buildings. So you may notice the smell closer to the ground. Next slide. If you do suspect a gas leak, get out of the area immediately and warn others to stay away. Do not open doors or windows, just get out and get to a safe location. If you're outside, move into the wind and away from the gas. Eliminate any ignition sources such as phones, lighters, motors, electrical switches, et cetera, and do not try to turn off any equipment. Uh, next slide. Once you're in a safe place, call 911 and then also call SCE to provide a description of the leak and its location if possible. Okay, next slide. So if you have any questions, please call SCE Catalina Island Service number at the 800-367-8851, or you could also visit the website, which is www.see.com, and make sure you put that forward slash Catalina and that'll take you directly to our Catalina-specific information. And that's all I have for tonight. Does anyone have any questions?
No, Council, go ahead.
I am wondering if the public is aware of all of their responsibilities? Because I wasn't aware of all of those. So is that something that we can, you know, educate the community on or send out a letter, a magnet, whatever the case is, just?
I mean, we can get that information on our website.
Yeah, and Edison actually just sent out last month, a book, both in English, a little booklet, in English and Spanish about all of this, so.
Yep, so I do, I do try to attend the resource fairs and things like that and provide that information and I do, I was just up at the school delivering safety information to all the kids and I have magnets that put out that information. But yeah, there is, it's good to know what the responsibility is from, you know, for the customers, from their meter onto their property. But if anyone ever does have any questions, they could call that 800 number, they could reach out to me directly, or call us out at Edison. Anyone could come out and identify for them that part of what their responsibility is.
Thank you.
Tracy.
All right, happy holidays, everyone.
Same to you.
Thank you. And the next item is item three. Robert Greenlaw is gonna present on update on Five Corners Site Improvement Project.
Good evening, Robert Greenlaw. Gonna give you a brief update on the Five Corners Project. I plan on doing this about every four to six weeks as we go through the project, just to tell you what's happening out there. So I know you see it all, but, you know, what are we really doing out there? What are we trying to accomplish? So then, we got, within the last two weeks, we got the executed agreement with Jordal Construction, got them underway. We removed the landscaping along Tremont Street and we removed the rock retaining wall along Tremont Street, along the street edge there. And within this, usually I'd look like a two-week look-ahead schedule with the contractor, but I'm just saying this, within the next month, because we, the holidays are sprinkled in this next effort coming up in the next two weeks, we're gonna build out the new storm drain along Tremont Street. And that's gonna take in itself about three weeks to get accomplished. And then, a reminder tomorrow, and this will happen intermittently during the project, is that we're gonna close a section of Tremont for the day, depending on what the activities are. You know, we've been trying to keep it at least at the start here behind the cordoned-off area that we're at, but tomorrow, we're gonna have to use, so in the next few days, we have to use some loaders and that's gonna load some trucks because we're trying to remove that soil that was behind the rock retaining wall. And then we also have our archaeologists on site to examine any artifacts that may come out of that area because we are in the sensitive area down here in the flats. So some of the soil may be offhauled. We've got a space over in the Field of Dreams so that we can process it at that point. So that's what's happening, at least in that, if you see it, taking a little bit longer than what we would expect to. So also, I wanted to point out, and here's the layout of the whole project and I've color-coded it. I went and got my felt tips and I color-coded it so I could talk about specific areas because otherwise, if you look at just a black and white set of plans, and especially at this scale, it doesn't make a lot of sense. But color-coding here is that you see the orange area on the extents of each side of the roadway, that's a sidewalk. That's the new sidewalk that's gonna be on each side of the road. It's gonna be four feet on the, let's say, the northeasterly side, the side with the houses, and then it's gonna be five feet on the side that's up against Las Casitas Development. And the blue hatched area is the new parking lot that would, is planned to be built here at City Hall to replace the existing area that is dirt behind the building now. The green hatched area is the future Workhorse Housing, Workforce Housing Site that is being developed with the project. And then the purple or spring violet color there, that is the open ditch that will still exist. It'll be much larger than it is right now at the extent down by the creek. And the yellow highlighted area is the new storm drain. So, and one of the things that happened when we built the box culvert out there, that's that concrete out in the middle of the intersection out there, it's too high. And so what you see is it's almost a 10% cross slope. So that's one of the things that we were trying to achieve with this project is get everything back to be somewhat of a normal roadway and then put the two small roundabouts in there. So that gives you kind of a layout there. And then, I guess, some people have been asking why all the tree removal and why the rock wall removal? And those were to make room for the drainage features that we're putting in, make room for the sidewalk construction, the housing pad, and also the parking lot. And I'll show you a few pictures of that. So, so if you look at this one spot, this is the old, the existing drainage channel and we're gonna be moving the pipe slightly more toward the roadway and it's gonna be two 30-inch pipes that take over this open drainage channel. And that was to create the space for the sidewalk, but also to create that pad for the housing. So that allows that to bypass all of that. And also, the utilities that were there are being undergrounded in that area. So if I go backwards just a bit here, in that area where the green pad is, in that area where the yellow is, that's what you're looking at right now and it's gonna be replaced by a twin 30-inch culverts and a parking lot and also a development pad plus that sidewalk.
Is the culvert, they're not, the culverts closed?
Yes, it'll be all underground and so if you, you'll see a larger scale here. And also to show you on trees here, so our property line here at the city, and I'll show you the next slide though, but you can see that the large canary palms on the left-hand side there were cut. That was not just for the project. Those are on Island Company property and while we were trimming up with SCE's tree crew was in before, the tree trimming crew even before the project, that was because they were tall palm trees, less than 10 feet next to the high voltage. Okay, so that's a fire danger. And so when they came in to trim up, they made the decision that with us to get that fire danger reduced, okay? And, you know, because palm trees, they don't do too well when you top them off, right? They're not like another tree. They like to grow up, 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 up. And so if we top them off, you know, they're gonna die. So that's, that's why they made that decision that they needed to go there. Okay, so now we're in the, a bigger view of that and so you can see the yellow storm drain that's gonna go replace that box, concrete box culvert that's through the middle of the intersection. So we'll be working from downstream at the Descanso end and then we'll be laying that pipe back up to the inlet there. You can see where the new sidewalks are, all in orange. And you can see the outline of blue there, that's the parking lot, I didn't hatch it in this slide, and you can see the outline in green, that's the start of the housing pad, so you can start seeing it in a bigger scale. Okay? But what that, if you refer to that picture, you can see why the trees, the utilities, all of that had to be moved, make room for all of this. And it's not like this is a superhighway going through here, because everybody's probably thinking, hey, you cut all the trees, you know, widen this road, it's going to be four lanes. No, actually, the road is going to be 29 feet from face of curb to face of curb. Seven feet of that toward the south end is going to be parking, so it's really 22 feet. It's no bigger than some of the roads that we have in the rest of town here. So it really is, we're not building a big street, it's, we're building larger sidewalks, you know, someplace, so everybody has a place to operate, every mode has a place to operate. Here's further on down, you're seeing right at Catalina, and then as we're going to the Descanso, that's where that housing pad ends. You can see where that yellow line, that's where the drainage pipe that we're putting underground now starts intersecting that violet line there, and that's the open ditch. And it's going to be a widened, more flattened, easy swale there, and actually, that's a place that I think that even as it's being used now, people come and take their pets, they could find their way, and some of that area, it'd still be a little bit like grassland down there when it's finished next to the sidewalk. And then here's, it finishes up. So you can see, you know, we've got the orange sidewalks, and we have the ditch. And also, I showed here on the red dots there, that's the property line with Las Casitas. So you can see here where the city's property is there, and I've got some Xs there where all the trees were removed. Three of the big canary palms were in our housing, and then the balance were, you know, at least toward that end, was because of that power line issue, you know? And that's across the whole state. Coming from paradise, watched my whole community burn down, I tell you, it is a real issue. So, you know, we need to make sure that we're taking care of that. Okay? And so, I mean, that's it for this time. I'll come in with more stuff next time, but I wanted to focus on what was going to happen in that next, you know, month coming up, so stay informed. Here's some contact points for you, you can get on those websites, and you can get on that QR code, and you, and like I have told everybody before, if you want even a personal tour, I'll take you out there and explain to you what we're trying to do, okay? So that's what we have today. Any questions?
No, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bob. Good news, item four, is we're asking Council to pull that from the agenda. We'll bring that at a later date.
Department head reports.
They're all rushing up here.
Mayor, city council members and city staff, Jackie Cordero, Public Works Director. The Public Works team has been focusing on end-of-year cleanup. They cleaned JMF, the cemetery in the maintenance yard. Those efforts consisted of pressure washing, lots of tree trimming, I know you've seen West Coast out there, cutting the grass, picking up debris, organizing all the tools and supplies, so they're busy, busy doing a lot of cleanup efforts right now. We will continue doing our pre-storm preventative maintenance. We're fortunate that we haven't had a major storm yet, but I'm sure it's coming. As this, since we haven't had the biggest storm yet, that gives us a little bit of breathing room to clean roofs, storm drainage, the hillsides, moving the K-rail, cleaning up the, you know, the hillsides along Pebbley and Crescent Hill, and of course, replacing the Pebbley Beach gates. That's on our, on our list for this next month or so. I'm working with Jordal on a few projects, fixing two manholes on Clarissa, placing a concrete slab in the basement of the wastewater treatment plant, and installing a new concrete slab for our toy yard, which is exciting, yes. I think Matt King is most excited of all. Finally, I am so excited to announce we promoted Roger Hernandez to Public Works Lead effective January 8th. When I first started, I met with all of you to, and staff of course, to assess what is truly needed within the Public Works Department, to address, address current needs and future needs. And when I received the feedback, I put plans together, one of them being the staffing plan that I talked to you about, and I put some actionable items in place, based on my recommendations of what I saw, based on the feedback, industry trends, my experience. And when I developed the staffing plan, it was clear that the department needed a lead position reporting directly to the superintendent, Jeffrey Hernandez, to, and this lead working position would be working side-by-side with the crew, be training the crew on-site, implement appropriate work safety guidelines, standards, and work out complex projects. And then again, this will give space for us, leadership and within the Public Works Department, to really plan out these long-term projects that we've been talking about, ordering the supplies, scheduling these long-term projects, working with contractors, and doing more facility inspections. And of course, what's really great about this, it sets up the department for upward mobility succession planning, and any strategic future growth that we see within the city. And so if you see him around, please congratulate him, and that's all I have.
Questions, comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Last time, Orin.
One last time.
Make it a big one.
Good evening, everybody. Since our last report, Tuesday, November 19th, Patrol moored 428 boats for a total of 2,894 nights, and Patrol warned or advised 44 individuals of municipal code violations. That also included one warning for a violation within the marine protected area. Patrol wrote five citations, responded to three medical calls, provided public assist 57 times, and Patrol completed 373 security patrols of the facilities and the surrounding waters during this period. Today's cruise ship was RCA Navigator, RCI Navigator, and tomorrow's cruise ship will be the Carnival Friends. Any questions? Thank you. That was good.
Going to miss you, Orin.
Oh, no.
Thank you, Orin.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Staff, Mike Wellagria, Fire Chief. In November, we had 85 total calls, 49 medical, 36 other. For the year, we're at 1,084 as of today.
Wow.
At this time, just want to remind everyone with the Christmas trees, make sure you have water in them, careful with any candles you have out, and with also all the extension cords for your lights that are all around. Just keep an eye on those. Over the alumni weekend, we held breakfast Sunday morning, we fed about 90 people, came through, a lot of first timers into the fire station. It was fun. We cleared, everyone was supposed to end at noon, but the last people didn't leave until about 2 o'clock. Christian Sisneros and I attended something that I never thought I would attend. We had a LA Long Beach Regional Nuclear Detonation Tabletop in the city of Carson with a couple hundred people in the room of all the players, and it was a very interesting conversation just about the world we live in, and this potentially could happen, but hopefully the wind is blowing that way. But that'll be another thing added to our local hazard mitigation plan of stuff like this, about sheltering in place. And last, we got a Merry Christmas, Edison, they're helping donate with some wildfire money, $500,000 towards the purchase of a new wildland fire engine.
Wow.
The letter, the letter's coming later, but we, I got the phone call yesterday.
Oh, that's wonderful, yes. Do you have any idea how many e-bike incidents you've had to be called on?
How many? We could pull it.
I'm kind of curious how that goes, how that's going. Okay. First of the year, we could start a new count or something, okay? Any questions or comments?
Evening, Mayor, City Council, City Staff. Since our last meeting, deputies had 177 log entries, and of those, 115 of them were observations made by the deputies, and 62 were calls for service. There were nine traffic stops, three arrests, one for DUI, and two for domestic violence. This Friday is the toy giveaway. We'll be flying with Maverick over some of the sheriff's staff, and with Santa Claus and his elves, and we'll be delivering toys at 2:30 at the helipads. A little later this year, so kids will be getting out of school by then. After we leave the helipad, we'll be bringing toys to the community center, the teen center, and they'll be passing out toys along with meals, you know, for needy families. This year, we have a better breakdown of toys for older kids as well, so it's not just young kids. I, dealing with the Sheriff's Youth Foundation, and they go out of their way every year to give us toys, and they went ahead and divided it up. I think it's going to be 60/40, so 40% will be for older kids and 60 for the younger kids. So it's a good breakup of toys. So, you know, if you're listening to this, bring your kids out, and it should be a good event. And I'd like to thank Orin for his partnership, and he's been great to me since I've been here, and that guy has always been on the ball and very reliable, and I'm very lucky to call him a friend and a coworker, so we're going to miss him, really. It means a lot to have him out there, and the guy's so knowledgeable, and he's so fast to respond, I'm going to miss him, so.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. So far, it's been a magical Christmas in Avalon. The holiday season kicked off with a bang on December 7th with the annual tree lighting and Shop Catalina with the Winter Wonderland event. This year's celebration was our biggest yet, featuring the talented Avalon High School Division II eight-man CIF championship team as a special guest to light the tree. The community-driven event was a true highlight, bringing together residents and visitors alike. We owe a huge thank you to Love Catalina, the Catalina Art Association, and our very city, our city's own community service staff for organizing such a wonderful event. I would like to say I'm incredibly grateful to have Marissa Morones and Constance Rux on our team. Their creativity and dedication have truly elevated all our events this past year. This Friday, we will be giving away 35 food baskets and toys to local families in need from 5 to 7 at the old teen center under the Community Church on Beacon Street. We also have Vons gift cards for individuals that are in need this year as well. Whatever toys that are not given away will be sent to an orphanage over town through, through Catalina, with Rotary Interact, through the Rotary Interact group. We want to thank BBK, Avalon Rotary, Avalon Lions Club, Love Catalina, Catalina Island Company, and Martin and Bernie Curtin for their generous financial donations to this program. We have more than we need, and we're able to give more this year. Also, we'd like to thank the Avalon Sheriff's Department for partnering with us again to bring in the toys for our youth. We like to ring in the new year this year with the Polar Plunge. Join us January 1st for our annual Polar Plunge on Middle Beach. Refresh and renew yourself for the year ahead as we take the plunge on the, take the plunge at 11:00 AM. Hot coffee and cocoa will be provided throughout, so if you don't want to take the plunge, but you want to enjoy people revitalizing their lives and finding themselves for the first time, you can sit at the beach and drink some coffee and cocoa. And afterwards, we've teamed up with the Fire Department here, and we will be doing a community breakfast at the Avalon Fire Station from 11:30 to 1:00. We'll have eggs, bacon, and pancakes, and coffee, and juice for whoever would like to come up and become part of community, start the year with community.
Do they have to be wet?
At 11:30 AM. What's that?
Do they have to be wet to get a meal?
No.
No.
Anybody in the community, come on by, we'll feed you, come join the community.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, and any questions?
And there's a primetime?
Yes, the primetime event is tomorrow, from 5 to 7 at the El Gallien. We have 25 people attending that event tomorrow, so that one's going to be a lot, it's called Ho Ho Horrible Sweater Event. So it'll be a lot of fun.
Thank you, Dave.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A couple items. For the month of October and November, some code enforcement stats, they issued over 300 citations, responded to 25 animal control calls for service, wrote 18 case reports, issued 30 red tags for illegal dumping, and assisted with 37 calls for service as it relates to traffic control. At the end of October, code enforcement implemented a new software program that integrates with our existing planning and building file and permitting program in addition to vehicles, so we're very excited about that. And then, just a reminder, if you want to come back to the council chambers tomorrow morning at 8:30, vehicle hearings will be here in the mornings. The Pebbley Beach landfill extension project has officially been submitted and accepted by LA County Regional Planning for both the CUP and the CDP. If you want to get updates and check out where we're at, check out the wall plans at cityofavalon.com/pbl for the Pebbley Beach landfill. And then tomorrow, we have a meeting with Sister Cities, with the Town of Zamami, which is a small island community off of Okinawa, Japan, and the US State Department to talk about considering a sister city relationship with the two communities, so that's exciting. And then, last but not least, I really want to thank Orin. It's been a pleasure to work with you, to get to know you, learn from you. You're going to be missed, and certainly enjoy swimming with you, so thank you. And actually, speaking of the polar bear plunge, for those maybe who want to swim a little bit longer, 7:30 at the dive park, we'll be out there January 1st, so come join us.
I'm so sorry, I'm going to be out of town for that whole week.
Good old news.
Good evening, Council, Kelly Robuffo, Contract Planner. Just a couple of quick announcements, there is no Planning Commission meeting tomorrow. We will be back on January 15th in the New Year, fully intending to have a meeting on that day. And then also, I just wanted to give a quick update kind of where we are on planning permits in the department. We've actually kind of seen an uptick over the last month of kind of smaller projects that are coming in, mostly residential expansions or accessory dwelling units, so that's very exciting for us. We're hoping that portends more work in the New Year, because it's something that the community definitely needs. And since we have been seeing that additional work, since this is a job, only one person cannot do alone, I've recruited one of my fellow planners at CH Trust, his name is Caden Lichens. He's not here tonight. He was here last month, actually, for the first time to be introduced to Planning Commission. So he's an assistant planner with our company, he's from Dana Point, graduated this year from UC San Diego. So I just wanted to kind of let you guys know his name. He'll be around a little bit more often in the next few months as things begin to come to Planning Commission, but very excited to have the amount of work on residential projects in particular to be able to bring him on board. I will still be the person that you see here every month, though. Any questions?
Who's the gentleman sitting next to you?
I think you're going to meet him at the final, the last, I believe the last item on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
He's going to come and talk to you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
We hit everybody, we did. City Managers Report, good evening, Council. I want to join everybody else. I want to join everybody else and again, thank Orin for his contribution.
That was really impressive.
That's right, I forgot.
I was gonna say, are you skipping me, Dave?
Oh, I forgot, we have Matt.
I don't have a whole lot to report, other than business licenses should have gone out last week, so if you didn't get your business license, please contact the Finance Department at City Hall. Got the full team there working in my absence, so if you didn't get that in the email or in the mail, check with Finance.
Are you sure they're actually in the office? I've been coming here every day, and I'm missing a couple of people in that Finance Office.
Well, they're answering my emails.
Just to let you know.
They call them coffee runs, okay?
No, they're all great. I bug them most every day, so they're good.
Sounds good.
How are you?
Keep turning off the video. I'm doing well, just over town waiting, so nothing to report on that end either, so.
Okay, well, good luck to you both. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
There you go.
How do they do that? Okay, go ahead, City Manager.
Okay, let's get back to it. So again, just want to join everybody else and thank Orin for his incredible thirty-three-year service with the city. He's been great to me personally. I knew, I had a lot of experience with city departments coming here. Harbor Department was not one of them. He has taught me a lot. I truly appreciate it. And he'll be missed, but he certainly has earned his retirement, so enjoy it, Orin. And I just want to say that as a nod to the importance of succession planning, which Orin advocated, you know, a couple of years ago, he said, you know, we need to get an assistant harbor master. And, you know, we went through that process, and we named somebody. And, you know, unfortunately, when an opening happens, like Orin's departure, it's great to have the opportunity to fill it with somebody. And I just want to announce tonight, it's my honor to announce that we're gonna promote Kevin Schmidt from Assistant Harbor Master to the Harbor Master. And he's got, I think, our hundred percent support on this, and effective January twenty, December twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four, he'll take over, so thank you, Kevin, and welcome.
Congratulations. Did you want to say something? You're never at a loss for words. Okay. We'll see you, we'll hear you in January.
Yeah, I'm sure we'll hear plenty from Kevin coming forward. I wanted to report out to Council that yesterday at four o'clock was the deadline for filing applications for the medical cannabis, open medical cannabis in the city. As of four o'clock yesterday, we had not received any timely applications. I would indicate we've received partial applications and application fee from two applicants that did express their interest, did notify the city, and were trying to work with the application and the deadline, and they weren't able to fully complete by the deadline at four o'clock. However, because they have made their intention and desire known to the city, what we would like to do is come back to Council next month at the next council meeting and request to resubmit the RFP to open it back up, because I'm sure both of those applicants would want that opportunity to be able to apply, give them that opportunity. Anybody else, because it would be open to new, would also have the opportunity to apply. We probably would not recommend keeping it open as long as we did this first time around, because I think everybody did have a chance, but with the holidays and other things, we do want to extend that, but just wanted to bring that to Council's attention. So we'll bring it out the next meeting to renew the RFP. With that being said, just want to thank City Council and staff for everything this year. Twenty-twenty-four was a very busy year with the City of Avalon. We got a lot accomplished. Twenty-twenty-five looks like much of the same, and wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
And City Attorney?
Just to say hello, I'll be there next year, and Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everyone. And be safe during the holiday period.
Okay. Councilmember reports.
I'll go first. I just wanted to say that I have been appointed to the Community Services Policy Committee with the League of California Cities. It's the one that I really enjoy being on. Last year, I was on environmental quality, which was interesting, but nice to be back to community services. And just wish the community a very Merry Christmas and a very, very, very Happy New Year. And I found something to do on New Year's Day, because I was gonna do the plunge, but something came up and I said, "I'll do it," so.
You're lying. Everybody can hear you, and you're lying.
Yeah, no, I was gonna do, I know, I was like, "Oh, cool, I'm off. I can do the plunge."
Nothing could be more important than plunge.
Reading at church, yes.
Oh, okay, all right. Yesenia?
Yes, I have actually joined the District Community Advisor Committee. We have a meeting this Thursday, the nineteenth. And then, of course, with the, with everything we just found out, not only am I bummed out about what's going on for many reasons, but it just reminded me, and I feel like if I could request now, that we could communicate with the district and negotiate something of making sure their Board of Directors meetings are available for us in chamber halls, since people are not going to be able to travel over town to advocate for their children. I want to make sure that we have a venue for them to do that.
For the school district?
School Board, yes.
So I believe they're now available on campus to attend?
For us?
Yeah. We, I've been advocating since last year for that, and they finally did the first meeting just last month.
Have they announced?
I don't know if the public knows about it very much yet, or if they've made it aware. They put it onto the school calendar that it's available. I don't know if people realize they can attend onsite and do public comment onsite here in town now.
Okay.
So, but it's onsite. The last one was at the auditorium. And I would say for people that need to ask questions, they can speak to Ms. Pogero or the school admin for the next available dates. But they're usually the, I believe, first and third Wednesdays. And it's normally a five o'clock start for the regular part of the meeting, where public comment is first, and then the agenda.
Well, on a positive note, I did want to also say thank you to Orin. Since I started Council, I was able to easily text you, call you. You answered all of my questions with no judgment either, because I didn't know much about the harbor. So, and even took the time to give me a couple harbor cruises, so I could make sure to, that I saw how everything actually worked, not just explain it over text or phone call, but said, "Come on down and actually see how we're functioning down here." So I appreciate it, and I appreciate all the work you do.
Just a few things from, since our last meeting, we, the mayor and I, attended Janice Hahn's Swearing Inn in Los Angeles, which was well-attended and a who's who of LA County. Was quite interesting, and a lot of great video montages. And then attended Gateway City's COG. One of the programs that people outside of Avalon are extremely excited about, and some people inside of Avalon might be excited about, is the new electric bike program that is coming to California. So this program will allow for low-income individuals and families to receive up to two thousand dollars to purchase an electric bike. The, I know.
And it's not a tax credit, it's two thousand dollars.
It's free and clear, right. It's free and clear money that you can use to purchase, with the hope that, for most cities where it is already set up to have clear bike lanes and safety things in place where they fit in those spaces to allow for transportation for people who may not necessarily be able to afford a car, they can have this means of transportation. For our community, there are people, I think, that will qualify for that. And I think, kind of, thank you. What we were hoping, sorry, screen effects, sorry, the jam, Jamie. The, what we're hoping is that there will be some level of safety training or requirements to be able to utilize electric bikes and make sure that everyone's riding them safely. I'm seeing some improvements throughout town on a regular basis, and I'm seeing some repeat offenders who just like to go fast and or not wear a helmet. So, you know, I was talking with a former classmate the other night, and we were discussing how we lost someone slightly younger than us to a bike accident that wasn't even on an electric bike when we were growing up. I would love to have this generation of people avoid having to go through that. That would be swell. So please have a talk with your students, if you're watching this, students, or if you hear about this at school this week. It's protecting you, it's making you safe, along with making everybody else safe. If you would just follow the rules and the law and be a little uncool for a moment while you're riding your bike, it's okay. It's better than not being alive. I was happy to attend the lighting of the Christmas tree. That was so festive. It was such a fun day and a fun evening. And really just wanted to give kudos to the Recreation Department and City Services Department, the Love Catalina team, and the Art Association for how collaborative you guys all were during that event. It was so great to see all three sets of your teams working together on that and being so complimentary and being genuinely excited and hearing new ideas. Update, we might be trying to put snow machines into the budget for next year for all of the businesses on Front Street. Just throwing it out there now in case we decide to. But anyway, it was, it was a great event. It was great to see so many community members so excited. And I'm hopeful that we can keep it going. I'm still getting comments daily from people of just how festive and wonderful town feels right now. So please keep it up, I'm loving it. In January, the Catalina Island Foundation will be having a retreat to discuss plans on where to spend money and help out the community. What I'm hoping to hear, especially from city staff, because you guys are so well-connected, and from members of the community, is where projects are that could positively impact the community. So I'm gonna be kind of touching base with each of you guys over the next few weeks just to get some ideas and things that you think would positively impact the community that could use an investment and some funds to help get them off the ground or to keep them going. But I just want to make sure that we're kind of helping to push some good things forward, and it can be in a variety of initiatives, so get creative. Let me know what you guys think. I'll be attending Gateway City's COG on the eighth of January. And otherwise, Orin Karstarfin, you are fabulous, sir. Your retirement is well-earned and deserved, the service you've given to our community. From, it was fun to see you and my mom interact the other day, and knowing just how much history is there of working on the mole, and back in the day, growing up and seeing you guys out there with the slideshow, which was magnificent, Kevin Schmidt, way to do it, with Hi, Fraser, and Odie, and everyone else that was on the Kumiteo mic. It was so cool to see some of those photos and remember some of that. So it is well-earned that you get the chance to retire. I'm so excited for you to get to spend more time with your family, and cannot thank you enough for your service.
Thank you. You all covered everything really, really well. It seems like it's been forever since we had a council meeting. But I just want to say, and, well, I love you, Orin, and good luck and all that, but on, I was up at the golf course the other day, and so there's this young kid in this really nice golf cart. He was like twelve and, or thirteen, and he was driving, and I said, "Where's your license?" And he goes, "Oh, it's in the cart," you know. And he's hauling ass down, down that road that comes past the golf cart. There are so many young kids driving golf carts without licenses, it's insane. And their parents are letting them do it. So I hope when we get this impound yard, if they are busted, we can impound that car somehow and make the parents responsible for this and give them tickets. It's incredible. And the parents are actually letting their, they're giving them the keys to these cars. So I really would like to think in twenty-twenty-four, we get a handle on this.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, yeah. Let's not repeat twenty-twenty-four. And just really start getting heavy on that. I don't think there's one person in town that would say we shouldn't be cracking down on the e-bikes the way they're riding them and on the golf carts. So anyway, we'd like your cooperation in the future for this, because it's out of control.
Do we know what our driver's ed program's still looking like?
No driver's ed. They haven't had, okay, when was the last?
Then now the tickets, how are they gonna go over to get their lessons and all that, so?
Well, they, they're not doing it anyway.
No, I'm not saying, in fact, I'm just saying, we're already blocking their way to learn.
Well, no, well, we can figure out, maybe there's just something that we do to the parents to put the responsibility on the parents.
You're giving consequences instead of solutions, you know what I'm saying? Like, we need to get them to learn. How can we get them to learn how to drive, so they can get their license?
Well, I know.
But that's what a parent is for?
Yeah.
That they're going out with their child to show them how to drive?
I'm sure the parent would love to show them how to drive, but they don't have the money.
But the thing, but the other thing is, you just don't let your kid take your golf cart out, because they know how to drive.
Just because they don't have a license, yeah.
I mean, yes, they should be learning. Yes, it'd be great if we had the program here. But then, once again, they do belong to an adult who should be supervising them being able to take a golf cart at the age of thirteen or fourteen.
Right, no, I agree on that end. I guess just my brain's like, okay, you're not supposed to do this, but how can I help you learn?
Okay, so, so we need to work with Long Beach Unified School District.
And get the program, yeah.
Because I talked to Tom Sutherland, he says it takes hours and hours and hours and hours to be a driver's ed instructor. And he was the last one we had, and that's been how many years? So I know that some responsible parents, I know it's expensive to take your kid over there to go to driver's ed, and I don't even know if they have the online class for just the group.
The parents are working so much, they barely can go up to a meeting up at school, you know, so that's why I'm trying to think of.
Parents, I'm sorry, some parents' priorities aren't right there.
Not most of them, but some of them.
Well, I know, so, but I know. So the school and working with the district, they've got to figure out how to do this, because they still have a vehicle up there, right?
Yes, they do.
They do, yeah. So anyway, okay. And now we're going to go to...
What's that calendar?
The Consent Calendar. Now, we're gonna go to Oral Communications. This is an opportunity for people to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes, and no action will be taken. Is there anything, buddy? No, okay.
All right.
There is none. Consent.
Consent Calendar, Item One, Approval of the Minutes from November nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four, regular City Council meeting. Item Two, Receive and File the Fiscal Year Twenty-three, Twenty-four Development Impact Fees Annual Report. Item Three, Adopt a Resolution Establishing the City of Avalon's Annual Growth Policy for Twenty-twenty-five. Item Four, Authorize the City Manager to Enter Into an Agreement with Blue Water Marine and Dock Specialities, Inc. for Replacement of the Barbara Pearson Public Dock. And I think that's it for the Consent Calendar, right? The next item is, I'm sorry, the next item is on the Consent Calendar, but it's for Council Acting as the Housing Authority. And that's Adopt a Resolution Approving a Housing Authority Successor Agency Annual Report for Twenty-three, Twenty-four. And the final item is City Council Acting as a Successor Agency for the Avalon Community Improvement Agency and Recognize the Obligation Payment Schedule Twenty-five, Twenty-six and Successor Agency Administrative Budget for Fiscal Year Twenty-five, Twenty-six.
Would you like to pull any of these items?
I just have a question. How, Kelly, maybe you can answer it, is how long is all the ending redevelopment gonna take?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
How, how long is the getting rid of redevelopment going to take us?
Oh, that would, that would not be nice.
Just kind of, just kind of like.
I can answer that, at least.
Yeah.
It would be until all the, until all the bond obligations that the agency took over expire. So that's, Matt can say when that is, but that's a long way away.
Okay, I was just wondering, Scott, I kind of figured that's what it was, but I just, just kind of an idea of how long it was, you know, it was gonna take to.
I believe it's twenty-thirty-four or twenty-thirty-five.
Okay.
Is when our final bond payment.
All right.
I can confirm, but it's sometime in the twenty-thirties.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
On that motion, on that, I will make a motion to approve Items One through Four as City Council, and Five, Six as Acting as the Housing Authority and Avalon Community Improvement Agency.
One second. Move it in second. Call for the vote.
It just come up? No? Oh, there it is, okay.
No.
Nope, it's not coming up.
There I am.
She's still voice.
No, let's do a.
It's just telling us who's talking.
Verbal count, yes. Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Lovell?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent. Councilmember Shiklin?
General Business, Item Seven on your agenda is authorize city staff to publish a request for proposal, RFP, RFP for the Civic Center Housing Project Modular Housing Unit.
All right, good evening, mayor and city council. I have a presentation. There it is. Look how beautiful that is. Okay. So tonight, we're requesting approval to issue an RFP for a modular housing project here on the Civic Center campus. So next slide. So this is a base, you know, complete, can you move to the next slide, please?
Yeah, the clicker.
Oh, 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 sorry.
You said do it yourself.
Ah, beautiful, okay. So just, we have a housing element and I kind of just wanted to review some of the goals. So you can see why we're here tonight and why we're focusing on this housing project. So the first goal in our housing element is to conserve existing housing supply in residential neighborhoods. It's to support increased affordable housing opportunities. It provides for development of a variety of housing types in Avalon, ensures that government actions, policies, and regulations do not adversely impact affordable and market rate housing, and then promotes equal opportunity for all residents to reside in housing of their choice. So just a reminder, you know, this is adopted by our planning commission and city council and these are some of the goals that we have for housing. Bob already did a wonderful update and presentation on the Five Corners project. And so I believe it was a green square in his presentation, kind of creating this great housing pad, this place with all of the utilities and the sidewalk improvements and making it a really great opportunity for development. So, so we have a housing development team. Bob's on it, myself, Dave, a city manager, Michael Thomas was ESG, Mark Passvier. And then we've got a couple architects that have helped us with some of the renderings that you're seeing tonight. And we've looked at the project, we looked at the location and determined that looking into a modular type building and construction would be, you know, a, a good opportunity in Avalon. Over 70% of the building can be done over town in a manufacturing facility, brought over and then constructed here on, on, onsite in which a new term that I learned is called stitching. So stitching those modular units together. So as we mentioned, we have created a basis of design. The plans are included in the agenda report for tonight along with the statement of work. You know, preliminarily, we're looking at potentially up to 23 units, a mix of four studios, nine one bedrooms, and 10 two-bedroom units. Obviously, this could change depending on the modular unit builder and what their recommendations are considering the space and the constraints that we have with the land. And here's just some more, like I said, in the agenda report, the, the basis of design is in there. So here, here's what we're looking at. There's a two-bedroom floor plan and the studios. So the idea with the studio units is it could be used for like temporary housing, like we use the casitas for right now. It would be a, a three-story structure. And then, like, if all our hopes and dreams come together, like this is a potential schedule for how quickly a project like this could happen. So if approved tonight, we can issue and start the procurement process for this modular builder. The recommendation for you tonight, and we worked with BBK in developing an RFP and a draft contract to make it clear that when we issue this RFP, we want to break it into two phases. So phase one would be design and engineering. And that's what we have funded in this year's budget, is that design and engineering approach. So we can really concretely develop a planned site and find out what it's going to cost truly to build this project. And then, you know, Matt, Matt and myself, we've been looking at different funding opportunities to fund a project like this. And so at a later date, we'll be coming to city council with some recommendations and ideas for your, for your approval. But in the meantime, we can work on this phase one to get a better idea of what that cost will be. Yeah, so, I mean, in theory, you know, if, if everything goes according to plan, summer 2027, 2027, we could have housing, which would be fantastic. Utilizing space that we already have, complementing the Five Corners project and creating a really special site. So yeah, just to reiterate, our recommendation tonight is to authorize city staff to publish a request for proposal for the Civic Center Housing Project Modular Housing Units. And again, that is that phase one and phase two approach. Do you have any questions for, for me?
Oh, this is just really great. Thank you all for working so diligently on all of this. Gosh. Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize city staff to publish a request for proposal for the Civic Center Housing Project Modular Housing Units. I think this is great.
I'm going to second it. Call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Lavelle?
Absolutely aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent. Councilmember Shiklin.
Hope it does still show up on YouTube for everybody.
Yeah. Thank you, council. Item eight, item number eight, improvements to Joe Machado Field. Dave, did you want to talk about this or? I mean, this is pretty straightforward. This is just a, a request to continue with our ongoing maintenance improvements that, that we've been taking place at Joe Machado Field with infill and just extending that to try to extend the life of that as much as possible.
If nobody has any questions, does somebody want to make the affirmative finding?
I'll make a motion, make the affirmative finding that Hellis Construction, Inc. is the sole source provider for eco-therm infill used at Joe Machado Field. As required by Avalon Municipal Code, Section 3-4 dot 111B, authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Hellis Construction, Inc. for improvements to Joe Machado Field for not to exceed a sum of $60,000.
Second.
Moved in second, call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Lavelle?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent. Councilmember Shiklin.
Aye.
Item nine, awarding the local hazard mitigation plan contract. At this time, we're asking council authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract with Tandem Solutions to update the city's local hazard mitigation plan for not to exceed some of $95,000 from the CIP project 254510. And these funds come from a, a grant that the fire department received.
Do we have any questions of our, of our fire chief?
I don't think so.
Hey, that much your pleasure.
I'll move to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract with Tandem Solutions to update the city's local hazard mitigation plan for a not to exceed sum of $95,000 from CIP project number 254510.
One second. Call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Lavelle?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent. Councilmember Shiklin.
By the time this tenth is, your voice will be gone after this next agenda item. Okay.
All right. Item number 10, we're asking council at this time to award a contract to Four Leaf, Inc. to provide building ser, building division services and to provide additional on-call consulting services in amount not to exceed $150,000 annually and authorize the city manager to execute the contract and any related documents and authorize a proposal to fiscal year 2425 budget amendment allocating $75,000 to account 10255-51228.
Good evening, mayor and council. I don't have a formal presentation for you this evening. We, we came to city council and requested going out to RFP for building division services. As internally, we move staff around and reallocate positions, we thought this was a, a good way to supplement, to supplement staff. We received, we received five, no, sorry. I'm, my computer is recording the meeting just in case. I don't have my notes in front of me right now. But we received three RFPs that were providing building divisions, full-service building division services. So people that are certified building officials, building inspectors. There's even staff that are, like, we talked about the hospital development project that's happening, people who are familiar with developments like that. And then there was another three proposals that we received that were specific to other areas of expertise, like construction management or on-call civil engineering. And so I'll be coming forward at a later date to maybe talk about some of those on-call options. We, we issued the RFP, we reviewed the proposals. It was myself, Dave, and John Gilbert, our current building official. We conducted presentations with the consultants and there was a clear, a clear winner, and it was Four Leaf. And Four Leaf, I have some experience with Four Leaf in my prior position with the City of Pacific Grove. They also provided building division services and did a great job. They were very knowledgeable, very responsive and helping, you know, whether it's homeowners out or large-scale developments, a great, great team. And so tonight, I have here with me is Marcus. I don't know if you want to come up here, Marcus? So Marcus, he drove around with John and I last week to get a better sense of the island and what our community is all about. And I think he's going to be a great, a great fit for our team, so.
Good evening, ma, madam council, or madam mayor and council. My name is Marcus Johnson. I'm with Four Leaf, a certified building official. I was a proposed building official for the city. I have about 20-plus years of experience in all different types of jurisdictions from small, I've held every position from front counterstaff all the way to department head and everything in between. Also, I know one of the gentlemen talked about Paradise. I was also the director's operation for those particular fire recoveries that we had with our company. And I'm looking forward to, to servicing your community and getting to know all of you, probably personally, so. Thank you.
That sounds good, Marcus. Welcome aboard.
Meet you, Marcus.
But first, we. I'm going to deny this award.
I make a motion to award a contract to Four Leaf, Inc. to provide building division services and to provide additional on-call consulting services in an amount of not to exceed $150,000 annually and authorize the city manager to execute the contract and any related documents. Authorize a proposal, propose fiscal year 2024, 25 budget amendment allocating $75,000 to account 10255-5128.
One second.
Second, call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Lavelle?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent. Councilmember Shiklin.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
It's like the man of the hour. We all want to see who he is.
Alrighty.
And I do just want to make it clear, so there's no confusion, that John Gilbert, as a current building official, is not being phased out of the city. He's an extremely important part of what we do here. And we just think that his skill set, we're going to move him into public works and, and he's going to be a big part of what we do going forward, so.
Yes.
Next item that we have is closed session, council, conference with legal counsel and regarding anticipated litigation.
Okay, and we shall be back.
Yeah, make a run for it.
I thought you were talking to Marcus. I was like, oh, no, it's too late.
No, I'm talking to all of them. They're all getting up and leaving.
You already said yes.
It's pretty quick, guys. I think you're exactly right. Exactly right. Thank you.
I'm going to stop. Oh, me too.
Recording stopped.
Just to talk those, through those things.
Okay. Good times. Yeah. I think it's on the definition of, of screening and search.
Oh, yeah. I'll tell them.
Well, according to Coast Guard.
Yeah, wait.
No, I, oh, not bad. I apologize. I'm not, I'm not leaving New York, so. It's my choice.
That's right. Three of those. Number three.
That's true.
I didn't know he'd go, he'll have to swim.
I'm going to create.
Just get stronger.
Yeah. Feel sleepy.
That's the job. I bet the chances are he's going to be.
No, no, it is. And actually, I did. Started feeling better about six months later. But, no. months later, but, no, honestly, I mean, actually, as soon as I actually, I was.
Yeah, I could imagine, I get like, my neck's always cancer, I always wonder, eh, it's just like tension, issue, and I'm going to do. Actually, yeah, your spine's destroyed, so, especially if you're doing more, yeah, I don't know, yeah, so, yeah, you get a little sore for next four years. Yeah, I, I honestly, it does, well, yeah, I need to go, I need to go, I've been sleeping these days, completely sleep.
Funny, what a question this is.
We all have the same problem.
I, I, I don't want to rush out, like, I need to actually.
Yeah.
I want to sleep in, and out, yeah.
No, I don't have that problem with dogs, they can chew my mouth.
I've tried dogs, sometimes, it's worse, and I, each time, I get, like, people might do that, and I hate it, I love the dog, but I don't have time, I get, I'll struggle, like, come down, one year, ten or something. Yeah. Yeah, I would say, like, I like a cute, like, a paws. Yeah, exactly.
Randy, though, does he have a little fluffy dog?
He does, he definitely does. I mean, it's a sweet little dog, but I hate it at the station, and it's like, dude, get the dog out of here, and he's like, ah, tries, and he's like, I don't, and it's crazy, and I feel, ah, it's not capable of bringing back in the station.
Did you ever see one here walking with a little fluffy dog?
Little fluffy dog.
I like taking. Anyway, it's like, oh, that's funny. That's pretty cool, and you got, because it's sheltered, right?
I think so, and I, we're, yeah, so, I mean, I like when they put it in such terms of rescue. Would you dive in the water or the ground?
Ready? Tell me, I have a rescue dog, this is my rescue dog, oh, okay, that dog was, that dog was trying to get in hell, I think, you know?
You know that dog? Yeah, it was two hours ago. One more half, buddy.
It was trying.
It's okay, you got off without any problems, and, you know, in fact, you can't bring her closer, like, thing. Oh, your father, you, you clean your arse, rock, I don't like it, nah.
You know what, I did, and I never told him, so somehow, he figured it out, right?
Yeah. For two years, it's not.
Yeah, it's been fun, yeah, it's been, it's been, it's been a while, you know?
Oh, really?
And then, Sherry told me, call me back, I have a little kid, so, so maybe that happens, Sherry wasn't sure that's what happened, and he goes, there's nothing in your pot?
How did you get that, did you go down?
Huh?
Did you go down?
I was swimming by the boat.
Okay, oh, yeah, makes sense.
Swimming by the boat, it was weird, because when the line wrapped on the pot, it broke the line, and it's tight, right, so it broke it, but it stuck in it, and then broke it, so, when I went down there, it was like, I didn't need to bring it back, I was just like, one, two, three, there were two, gone.
Like magic.
Yeah.
All right, guys, see you later, tomorrow, sure.
If you could just note that, Jamie, that would be.
I can do that.
The best thing ever. Yeah, I just think we had horrible news, and they moved fast.
All right, well, you have a wonderful evening.
All right, Jamie, have a good night. I hope you, yeah, you get to go home soon.
And then, and then work on the problem with the school district, I'm.
Yeah, when I saw that they were doing the two thousand dollars, I'm like, going, oh, crap.
Oh, I know, so, so if I already have one that my parents paid for, I can get another one?
If you qualify.
If I qualify, no, I can have two e-bikes?
If you qualify.
I know, but.
It's under, I think that threshold was seventy thousand for a family of four. Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
Okay. You're going. Okay.
So seventy thousand for under, for a family of four, and forty thousand.
And we're back from closed session and no reportable action, Merry Christmas, Happy New Years, meeting adjourned.
Merry, Tony. I think it's forty-five thousand for an individual, if you make under forty-five thousand a year.